Okay.
Yes, well, good morning. We are back from recess and before we begin at this part of our meeting, I would like to mention that Sheila Lyons, our third commissioner, is not here today. She is attending a meeting of the Minerals Management Committee at the Mass Maritime. And that's actually relating to Cape Wind and some of the other issues that are part of the agenda of the Minerals Management. So now we have here our representatives from Elder Services and maybe you'd like to introduce yourself for the people at home.
Leslie Sherman, Executive Director of Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands.
And Deborah Trent Haglia, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Elder Services.
Great. So it's your presentation.
Okay. As you know, you have been supporting our Meals on Wheels program for a number of years, which we certainly appreciate. Couldn't do the program without that. In your packet we have just our general information that you're familiar with, but it's got the latest of our annual report for you. And also Deb has prepared some charts so you can see. I know you're always interested in how many meals we're serving and in different towns and the costs. And so if you'd like, we can go over, you know, some respective charts. Do you want which one you...
Nice charts.
Yeah.
The first one is, as you see, I have a four-year comparison of the meals delivered and the meals served at the various convocate sites. And looking at fiscal 2000...
Is it possible you could pick up some of these charts, Steve?
Sure.
Do you want your own packet?
Well, actually, we want to see if we can get, you know, one.
Yeah, you could have it at home, yeah.
Yeah. It might be, you know, as you're talking about it, you know...
Right. And maybe we should say, if somebody doesn't know this, and I know you're very familiar with that program, but home-delivered meals is what it sounds like. The meals are delivered to the homes of frail individuals who are homebound. And the senior dining are open to all people 60 and above, and they are located at various sites throughout the Cape.
Okay. And in 2009, as you see, we served in Barnstable 189,000 meals, which was a 4% increase over 2008. Served, I meant, mean, by served, I mean delivered to the homes.
Can I ask a question? Because I always, 2008 and 2009, fairly, you know, fairly substantial increases from the previous years. Is that a reflection of, do you think, of the economy and the problems that we've had those two years?
I think it's the economy for one thing, but I think with home-delivered meals, we're seeing a very, you know, lots of people now. There's many, many elders on the Cape, as you know, and they're very frail. And they're in situations where they're in their own home, isolated, and maybe have had some health problems. People are being released earlier from the hospital and, you know, just the continuing health situations going on. The need just continues to grow. Lots of isolated elders on the Cape without any really real families around.
And the next chart shows the various towns, if those 189,000 meals were served and the number of meals served in each town.
For Barnstable County.
Within the, I think this question comes up in terms of what contribution the individual towns make to this. And which towns are the ones that are net contributors and which ones are not contributing?
If you go to the third page of the handout...
It's this one.
I have a, maybe it's the next.
It's the next, it's the next one.
I have a budget for the nutrition program. And under the revenue, I list the towns that do contribute in the, amount that they contribute.
We also have Martha's Ferry and Tucket on there as well, but your chart is just reflective of Barnstable.
Right.
So are these, are these the only towns?
Correct.
Okay.
And I know you always ask us if Barnstable is contributing.
I know.
And it is the county that contributes.
It's the county, right.
To that. However, we are at the council and agent, and we are in their building. We do pay a small nominal amount for electricity. Isn't that in Barnstable?
Yes. I do remember that from the last discussion.
So they're supportive in other ways, but not cash?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
And then flipping back to the chart, along with the meals, the next chart, I have how many, the number of clients that we serve by town. We have in total 2,320 consumers in fiscal year 2009 and a breakdown of each town.
I don't know if you have any questions about, it's kind of what you might assume Barnstable being one of the largest towns has the highest meals.
Has the federal money picked up at all?
No, not at all. We haven't had an increase in federal money in, I can't even recall, in Meals on Nutrition.
I know it was going down for a while. Did it level off maybe or no?
Yeah. It, they usually do level funding, but level funding each year is, you know, you just add more to the deficit. We always run a deficit in our meal program because it's just very costly. We don't have a waitlist for meals. You, you may or may not be aware of this, but the Elder, the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, who provides a majority of our funding for basic home care programs and several of our programs, have instituted a mandated waitlist for our clients. And we have been on the waitlist for the last several months, and we have no control over the waitlist. It's managed by the Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And we have a very high waitlist for our services. We currently have close to 200 people waiting for services. We have intentionally not put a waitlist on Meals on Wheels because it's such an important service. And some of the folks that are waiting for our general service, if we're able to at least provide a meal, that's somebody in the home. But we don't see that situation improving on the Executive Office of Elder Affairs level. We received some significant cuts with the governor's 9C cuts, and he's announcing his budget today. He may have already done it. So we're going to be interested to see. We don't, we're not expecting anything.
How do you deal with the shortfall? Is it through...
We have fundraising, you know, we do fundraising for Meals on Wheels. So Thanksgiving 365 is that one fundraiser in, right around Thanksgiving. We also have donations coming in from Meals on Wheels and the senior dining. There's no cost to the meal. It's a federally based meal, so there's no cost, no charge. But we do a suggested donation. Right now, our donations are down a little and running about 90 cents a meal for the donations.
And the cost per meal is like $8?
Eight dollars. And that's, that's not, that calculates not only the food cost, but the cost of the key manager to go to the client's house and some other administrative expense. But that's the total cost.
Right. And you can see the, you can see the breakdown on the next chart, a chart that has all the breakdown in terms of, yeah, the client fees, 90%. It is 90 now this month. It dropped down a little bit.
The 90 is the budget that we had budgeted for 2010, but for the first six months, we're seeing a, an average of 90 cents a meal.
And I think that's reflective, certainly of the economy.
So now with this waitlist, you see, you won't know what you're going to get for, yet for 2011.
Correct, correct. And what the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, with this waitlist, they anticipate that there'll probably be 5,000 to 6,000 elders throughout the Commonwealth that will be on the waitlist by June, because they don't anticipate opening up the waitlist. And we can't. 5,000 to 6,000. We have the highest on the waitlist, and it's reflective of where we are. Our other, other agencies that provide similar services are catching up to us. But it's, it's very difficult because the people that are on the waitlist are very, very frail and in need of services. And as I said, sometimes we can provide a meal to them, and, and other times they choose not to have a meal for whatever reason, but that's something that we do. And as an executive director of the agency, I have asked my staff to call, people that are on the waitlist get called. Those are in a high priority, get called every two weeks to see how they're doing and if we can refer them anywhere or help them in any way. And other people are being called at least once a month, sometimes every three weeks. It's very difficult. This is never, Elder Services has been in existence since 1972. We've never had a waitlist like this. And this is state imposed, so we can't do, you know, even if we had some money that if maybe some clients were under expending and we could bring some people on, which what we used to be able to do, we can't do that now. Elder Affairs is managing this in, at the Boston level.
So even if your donations increased or anything like that, you still could not take people off the waitlist?
Right, because it's Elder Affairs is mandating us to have this waitlist.
Okay. Just do, just do me some quick calculations. If we have, if 24% of us are over 65, okay, that makes about 55,000 people. And looking, you know, looking at the total amount of, let's see, this 32,000 is the meals. What is the amount of clients you're serving? 2,300. So 2,320 people, that's what's...
Are getting meals.
5%, 5% of the people that are, you know, over 65, you may, you know, it may be a small increment between 60 and 65 that are frail. But, but the thing that's troubling is that 5% of the people in that age category that live here need Meals on Wheels. The fact that they need it is the thing that's troubling.
And if you're getting Meals on Wheels, you are virtually homebound. You have an inability to cook. You're very frail. And, and so many of the people don't have, you know, a lot of supports around them. And the meal truly is the one time that somebody appears at their door. It's a safety net.
That's also a fraction part. I think it's probably equal in importance to the meal itself. And I know we've talked in past time about...
Absolutely.
We were talking in past time about how elders have food that they're given to get them through that, but, you know, but people get hungry.
Oh, absolutely.
And it turns out, I think, that one of the things we found out in a couple of the emergency situations, there wasn't any food.
There wasn't any food. And that's, that's remarkable. On occasion, I deliver meals and so does Deb. You know, it gets us out there and seeing people. And that is remarkable when you do open someone's refrigerator and, and there's no food. And they might have had, you know, a great career and all sorts of things, but now they have a health issue that's so costly for them, or they just, you know, got in circumstances where they just, you know, they just can't afford to have help come in and that type of thing. So the, so the social interaction and the safety net. And I know you're all aware of what happens if, if there's, we knock on the door and somebody doesn't respond. You know, there's a whole, you know, safety thing that we do.
And I think that people need to know about that as well, which is one of the reasons we all put, you know, we try to put that out to people that it's, I guess...
It's more than just the meal. You know, that's kind of a slogan, but it really, it really is the truth because we, we have found, you know, residents on the, on the floor or been in some kind of medical crisis, or that the volunteer knows the protocol and the paramedics come out, and we've made a difference. Absolutely.
Suppose someone needed Meals on Wheels just on a temporary basis. Maybe they've been, so are they, are they on a waitlist too?
Yeah.
Or you can step in.
There's no waitlist for Meals on Wheels. We, as an agency, have made that commitment. The deficit continues because of that, but, and that's why we're here. But in the home care portion of our agency, for basic home care of coming in, if you need some help with homemaking or personal care, that type of thing, that's where the waitlist is, and it's stayed imposed. And, you know, we have lots of families who have been calling us because there's been people on the waitlist. Our longest person on the waitlist has been there since June.
Since June.
And we can't do anything about it unless the Executive Office of Elder Affairs tells us to, you know, you can allow people on. And I'm not quite sure what's going to happen with that. But, you know, the Meals on Wheels is, you know, we, we see the need go up. And as we just said, there's so many individuals over the age of 60 or 65 that are in need of the meals.
That's going to increase.
Right.
So what are you looking for from us this year, what you said?
Whatever you would like to give us.
Whatever we'd like to give you.
We'd like to give you a lot.
Yes, we know that. That's, you've been, we are very much aware that the county, we're one of the few that get funded. And we absolutely appreciate that commitment, and we know that that commitment is there. We obviously would, would like to be level funded. If you have more in your budget, that would be wonderful as, as well.
And so what is level funding to you?
70,000.
70,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's actually 75,000.
It's 75,000. Yes, 5,000 goes to pay offset mileage for some of the volunteers that are driving. Not all of our volunteers. Now, that's a whole nother thing. You know that we have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. We could not run this program without the volunteers. Many, many people don't take the mileage, but we, again, based on the economy, we see a lot of people now who are requesting the mileage because some people are delivering routes and you could be, you know, out in any town, you know, and do maybe 10 houses, but it could take you over miles and miles. So that's the remainder of the five. It's through for RSVP volunteers.
RSVP, that's it.
Right, that's what it is. And it's, and we reimburse for those who requested. So...
So our total budget for them has been 75,000.
75,000.
I think it's gone down. It's kind of gone up.
It has. It was 100,000, and then it went down, and then you restored some of it on back. So we would ask that.
Certainly is one of the bubble books of mercy to feed the hungry.
We all agree with that, yeah. We'll agree with that. Yeah. It's, you know, I, I think by, by delivering meals and anybody that's watching that's maybe interested in volunteering and, and would like to help us do that, it's, I think the volunteers get so much out of it. The person does, but the volunteers. I, I know just when we do, you know, sometimes I find myself just, I'm at my desk, I'm doing things, I'm trying to balance, we're trying to do all this, but you go out and deliver meals, which I'm going to do tomorrow. It's just, and so many people are so appreciative of getting the meal because it enables them to stay.
We have so many people who are lonely. And the other part is, we have, you know, we've had like, you know, Lyme River.
Lyme River.
Lyme River, you know, talk about, you know, depression among the elderly.
Absolutely.
And a lot of that depression grows out of, you know, the loneliness and the isolation that, you know, people begin to feel. And without this contact, I don't know, what, what are they going to do?
Well, television is not a companion. It's a distraction.
Right, it's a distraction. But it's not, and after a while, when it's, you begin not to see it.
Right.
You know, type of thing. But there's so many, I think so many people who, because of where we live, moved here, you know, years and years ago, and maybe had a spouse and lots of friends. And we're seeing a very frail and a very elderly population now. We have several clients that are over 100 years old.
That are at home?
Yes.
That's remarkable.
Right. And, and they just need a little bit of help, you know, and they're at home, and that's where they choose to be.
But just on the retirement side, we know that a little bit. We've seen people who are 90 and older grow over the past year or plus, 13%. It's just, it's a huge population group.
Our average client, I mean, is probably about 85 or so.
85.
Yeah. You know, we have, obviously, we have a lot younger clients too. And then when you had asked, Mary Pat, in terms about temporary people, sometimes people do come out of a hospital with, you know, hip surgery, and they're living alone, and they could be really active before, but for whatever reason, they, they just don't have anybody that's going to be able to help provide the meal. So they're on Meals on Wheels on a very short-term basis.
And indeed, when Brad was going through her, her replacement, she wasn't able to do anything.
Right.
If it wasn't this, somebody would come in.
I remember that last year. We were, we were like, we'll send you some meals, you know, but, but you see that.
Ahead of time, yeah.
Yeah. And a lot of families will do that. And, and our meals, some, some people, generally people get meals for, you know, every day. But some people get meals a couple days. They may go to Adult Day, for instance, like in Barnstable, and go and get the meal there, which we provide those meals for the daycare center. Or, and they may get meals three days a week. So it's really what the person needs. It's not, it's not a program where if you don't get meals seven days a week and you fit in this box, you don't get them. We have all sorts of scenarios. People that are working maybe three days a week and, and take care for their, for their parents or, or family member the other two.
So 189,000 meals delivered. And what's that population?
230,000.
Yeah.
Of course, you know...
So it's one a day. Some people get seven, right?
Some people get seven.
Seven, some people get five.
You know, most people get five.
Five days a week.
Five days a week. And then we don't serve on Saturday and Sunday, but what we do is they get the meal on Friday. And then if somebody is very, very frail and vulnerable and, and we know that, we, you know, might make a call to them or something, right? But generally, the meals are Monday through Friday.
Yeah, just to go back to kind of the state-imposed waiting list.
Yes.
You know, thinking stuff all over, I know. But the state has their own issues quite frankly worse than ours. But have you sat down with the Cape Cod Legislative Delegation and kind of make them aware that this is a major issue on the Cape?
The legislature, they are, they are aware of this. And actually, in the next, probably about a week or two, I'm going to be sending out another letter, just updating people, you know, where the waitlist is at. And, but it's very difficult. And we've never had something like this, state-imposed.
You might want to come to this as well. And I, I know it's not from Senator O'Leary to invite you, but I'll invite you.
Yeah.
So that, you know, because everybody's going to be there, you know.
I haven't, I haven't received this letter yet, but I generally do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, yeah, you're on the list.
So, yeah. Yeah, because we usually do dynamic community action, and Senator Murray comes in. Right.
Most of the Human Services Committee shows up.
Oh, yeah. I don't blame them. We're there too.
And last year, we're, I was fortunate to get in to see Senator Murray, just myself, which is not, which is kind of hard to do because she's very, very busy.
Or even their staff.
But the staff are wonderful. Yeah, I mean...
And Senator Murray has always impressed me with having a direct commitment to the disabled and to people that, you know, frail elderly and to the elderly in general. She, she has not forgotten what the business of serving the people need.
And I find that generally, our whole legislative delegation has been very, very supportive. They support, you know, any kind of bill or any amendments that are coming in for the elderly. But it's like what you said, there's a finite amount of money. And, you know, this, this year, this year, after the 9C cuts, we received a cut in our protective services. They cut a million dollars out of the line item, and for our agency, that resulted in about 89,000 or so. And this is protective services, which you've never received a cut in protective services before. So it's just, you know, difficult times we're living in, you know, but we thank you for allowing us to come before you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for these great reports and graphs.
Anytime.
Really so helpful to see in that, in that presentation. So thanks.
They remind us of our meals.
And we look forward to seeing you on February 12th.
February 12th, right. As I said, I normally get the, the letter, so I'm...
I do need that.
I am going to write it down on my book.
Probably in your mailbox.
Yeah. We do, so...
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Deborah.
Right, thanks, Deborah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
All right. We'll look forward to see what the president has to say tonight because I know that he has mentioned caregiving and some other services regarding in-home care and hopefully...
Was there any, I'm sorry, was there any ARRA money available for...
We did, we did get stimulus money, W and B. We, I'm sorry, I thought I was blocking you.
It's just Andrew.
We did get stim, sorry. We did get stimulus money for our mature workers program. So we were in, that ends March 31st. So we were able to put 15, 15 mature workers, was it 15, to work. And we're fortunate that we have room in our regular program. So when the stimulus ends March 15, those 15 people aren't going to be out of a job, which is not always the case. We did receive money, well, you want to explain how the state, because we really didn't receive any additional money because of how the state did the stimulus for nutrition.
They allowed us to use $90,000 in ARRA funds to help with the convocate and the home-delivered meals. And that was to be used prior to the federal money that we received on usual grant.
But we weren't able to put more people on. We had hope when we heard about the stimulus money. Originally, it was going to be coming directly to us and we could determine what we needed to do. And we were going to purchase emergency meals, which is an emergency meal goes out, is what it sounds like, in a hurricane or, or snowstorm or whatever. And it's very costly for us to provide those meals. And we have to replenish that all the time. And we were hoping to do that with that money, but it's being used to just generally support.
Yeah. It's a bit of, I was just going to say, it's a bit of double-edged sword because you get it today, and then you do what you do with it, and then it's not going to be there tomorrow, you know? That's part of the problem.
Are you connected with the WIP too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because we were talking about, you know, the training programs and the outreach yesterday. They included mature workers, but it also includes other...
Other people.
Other, other programs. And I, and right now, there's an act of advertising outreach to get, to draw people in.
Into it, yeah. We, we see a lot of people coming into mature workers program. You know, it ebbs and flows. You know, sometimes there's not very many people, and other times there's so many people. So the stimulus money was helpful in that because there were people on the waiting list for that program. And as I said, we're, we're going to be able to move them into our regular program because that's difficult.
Great. All right, then.
Andrew Gottlieb here from the Cape Cod West Water Collaborative. And we're reviewing from a previous meeting, recommendations from the review committee and, and where we need to go in terms of the priorities related to the collaborative, the technical review team that we agreed to appoint, and then any review of the collaborative in terms of what issue or support or type of support that they will need to further the goals.
And when we met, we met back in December, and at that time presented, you were Mel that had laid out some steps to consider to bring to conclusion the review committee process, which at that time, the board voted to, to accept. And included in that were decision to retain the current structure of the governing board and to designate watershed priorities as areas of focus for the collaborative and the county activities, the creation of a tactical team. And what the assignments that came from that meeting, in my recollection, were that we were to draft sort of a thank, a formal thank you response to the members of the review committee, which have sent around for your review, so you can take that under advisement. That the collaborative was supposed to come back and make some recommendations to you on which areas, which watersheds were priority. We had one discussion in the steering committee about that two weeks ago. We're meeting this afternoon to refine and finalize that list. So you'll be getting that list in a matter of days, assuming that the discussion goes as expected to this afternoon. So we'll have that for you to consider at your next meeting, if you choose to. And then you were going to convey a letter to the selectmen sort of saying, this is how we ended this process. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your comment, your support for regionalization. Took your, your concerns seriously. We decided as a result to stick with the town-based representation of the 15 members. And that the board, the commissioners were looking for representation and engagement of the selectmen on a going-forward basis. And so there's a letter, a draft letter kicking around now that tries to distill all that information, and that's, that's where we are.
Okay. And on the, and on the draft letter, as it, as we look at that, the main concern, I think I expressed, you know, my main, main interest, that it would be one that was, that would be firm, that would not be confrontational, that would, you know, that would stay... firm, that would not be confrontational, that would, you know, that would state clearly, you know, what we're trying to, you know, what we're trying to get done.
Right.
And then, you know, do our best to, you know, to recruit and engage, you know, the interest of everybody. Because I, I don't want to, as, you know, as, as we talked about flying, I don't want an impediment to be created, that we have boards of selectmen that, you know, that are advocates against.
Right. I don't think that's going to be the case, in this instance. I think, you know, what the, the draft letter was attempting to do was state clearly that, you know, we have, this is an evolutionary process. And as the collaborative moves forward, a lot of towns are now at the stage where they're making hard financial and technical decisions that necessitate the involvement, full involvement, engagement of the boards of selectmen, the chief executive piece of these towns. And that, you know, the letter really calls for, or asks those town, towns to appoint members that are reflective of the boards of selectmen view. And, you know, it's, it's clear, always, you know, under the structure we have now, it remains the discretion of the boards to appoint whoever they want. And I think it's important for a clear statement from commissioners to say, we really think at this point in time, you know, moving forward, that we're all collectively best served by having selectmen engaged in that process. And I think, I don't think it's confrontational or an impediment at all to say that. The towns continue to have whatever discretion they want to utilize in appointing whoever it is they want to appoint, because appointment authority in the, in the ordinance is theirs. But I think it's really good, right now, to just sort of say cleanly, given where we are and what the issues are now, as a board of commissioners, we think it's best that the selectmen be involved. And leave it at that.
Okay.
And leave it at that.
So what I'd like to suggest, if I may, is that I think that you've gotten input from, you know, from Sheila and from me, and that perhaps you would compose a letter that sort of incorporates all of those thoughts.
I'd be happy to.
Like what you've said here, and then, I don't know if you've.
I agree.
I don't know how you want it to go. What, do you want it to go under the chairman's signature, just for efficiency sake?
I think all three is right, yeah.
All right. So why don't I, if you're amenable to it, why don't I take the comments that I've gotten from you? I've spoken to all three of you. I think I have a pretty good sense. And I don't think, frankly, there's any disagreement.
No, I don't.
I think we're all.
To me, I'm more, I was more into a tone, and, you know, and let's say clarity than.
Yeah. I will revise the letter, and we can prepare it, and you guys can sign it and move it along. I think it's, I think we're at an opportune time to just sort of remove the issue, put it to bed, and get going. So I will revise the letter.
Okay. And then that would allow us to sort of get this off of our plate by the next week.
Right. Exactly. Yes.
I think that would be good. I think we're at a good point, where things are moving, and communication that puts, puts to bed officially the review process from you, and then charts out how we're moving forward. I think it's very well timed. So I'll get you a draft revised letter today.
And then finally, I want to make sure that all three of us, you know, are on the same page with regard to what we, what we believe the tactical team will accomplish. We might need, you know, something that has bullet points.
I can, I can give you a six month work plan for the tactical team in the next week or so.
And in that way, when, you know, that would respond to the pushback that I, you know, that I got from the assembly, that, you know, that we have something that we can, we basically can read off, I'd say, use as a, as a reference point of our intentions. And if it's all written down, we don't have to go back and say, well, what, you know, what did you mean, or what did you didn't mean? And then we can just dismiss it and move on.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I mention one other thing?
Sure.
This is on the funding side of things. The county has this allocation under the ARRA of these recovery zone bonds. There's two different kinds. I don't know if we've talked about this. There's the facility bonds, which are eligible for private entities to use for economic development projects, and we're going to.
Does it fall on the private activity bond count?
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
It's getting beyond my capacity. I don't think so. But then there's these other bonds, or economic development zone bonds. They're eligible for municipals to use, however they're taxable.
Right.
But I just got a call from a, I can't remember his name, he was a consultant, and he said, maybe we could use this for wastewater bonds. It seems to me a bit, or for wastewater projects, seems to me a bit iffy if that's an eligible project. But you guys should know about it. Why don't I send you the, there's not a lot that the county has for an allocation, about five plus million, something. Let me send you the information.
Yeah, I can take a look at it.
Spread around on the, on the, to the, to the collaborative, let people know about it. They want to use them five.
The other thing on funding that's coming up is the National Sosinoka, the county.
Naco.
Naco. They've got some funding available for things that are related to restoration of NOAA trust lands.
Right.
And it may or may not be relevant to us.
They've got some money from Sandwich, you know, from that NOAA fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say NOAA, what's the NOAA fund?
Well, it's.
It's coastal, you know.
It's coastal money.
Coastal zone management related.
I wonder if, what's his name might be able to use better, make better use of that. But we're going to go down with that for that project.
Maybe. So it's worth looking at. I've got the, I've got, I've got the application. I looked at it last night. It doesn't look too difficult, although those things tend to be sometimes. So I'm not sure whether it's relevant to us for wastewater, or whether it's better for something else. But I'll shoot it over to you. We're taking, we're taking a look at. You know, the grander scheme, I think it's small money, it's hundred thousand buck type projects. I may look at it as a potential source of funding to help us with the wetlands pilot program.
Did you see the article in yesterday's paper, Cape Cod Times? But it was the My View by Jack Edmonds.
I did not.
You know, he listens, Sandwich. I wish I had brought it with me.
Okay.
I didn't. But, but look at it. He's talking about solar energy, and how individuals can do this on their own. But then he raised an issue of funding, where, where he was saying a municipality could create a bond, or could issue bonds. And then, an individual homeowner then could borrow the money from this bond, say from the town, and then be able to complete the project, and then pay the money back to, through the, through the bond. But I was thinking that that might be another consideration that we could have from the county, in terms of wastewater.
Well, we already do it on the title for the Septic Management Program.
I know, we do it on the Septic Management.
Exactly the same model.
Yeah, we should take a look at that same model, and see whether or not, how that might work in concert with municipal, with municipal tax rates, or betterments, or, or any of those things. And, and maybe have some kind of a pool, rather.
Yeah, we were talking about, yeah.
Funds with that.
Tape-like callback from the call up.
Yeah, I think something like that would be pretty interesting.
Right now, you, see with the, with the Septic Betterment, that there's legislation in place that allows sort of that public bond issuance for private use.
Yeah. Well, this would be the same thing.
So you would need the same type of thing for renewable energy projects.
To do that.
You could do it. Although for solar, you really.
Well, I wasn't thinking of solar, I was thinking of wastewater.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, Cape wide, I was thinking.
That's probably doable, because you just need to broaden the statute.
Yeah, you need to change it, because there's a list of things where you can borrow.
But that could be another avenue for homeowners to be able to access over a long period of time.
Yeah, I mean, what you could do, what would be, and frankly, you can already do this on the Septic Management Program. You can, you can borrow from county for the cost of connection.
A hookup, yeah.
So you've already got a county vehicle.
Connection.
That allows you to help defray people's costs. Now, whether you wanted to expand that, to be inclusive of borrowing a betterment, or whatever.
Or, yeah, modify the interest rate.
That's an interesting question. Interest rate buydown would be tricky.
I think we have some discretion on that.
You do, but you're sort of, because you're not talking about, you know, the bond issuer is the town, so you're buying down the town's bond interest, but you're running through the homeowner. So the path would be tricky. But those are all things we can look at.
That we can take a look at.
Before you leave the.
Yeah, I know you have to leave, so I watch your clock.
Before you leave the NOAA thing, the Energy and Land Management Committee that I sit on, at Naco, does connect with, you know, coastal zone management and NOAA. If there's any advocacy that, you know, that I could do on this, because it worked for us when we were, when Sandwich had come in and asked us some help with Shawnee Dam, that did, you know, that did help. They did get that piece. It wasn't much, but, you know, but it did.
Yeah. They're really, they're citing a lot on Fish Passage and Dam and stuff, right? So I'm not, not certain to me how well the broader wastewater management issues are going to work, but they would open, they would support doing some opening of channels back to natural size. So my work for Park River, my work for Born's Pond.
My work in Orleans for some of the talk, when NACO was in, NACO margins.
Maybe, maybe. So I'll look at it. I'll shoot it over to you.
Yes, that's me. I'll probably share with Don Liptak and Conservation.
And if it goes forward, you know, I'd be happy to carry.
Deadline, good time. Deadlines aren't so much.
That's the only trouble with these economic development bonds. You have to issue the bonds by the end of this year.
Yeah, see, I'm just not sure you're going to have enough, you know, they're not tax exempt though.
Yeah.
No, they're taxable.
But the tax exempt stuff's a problem, because you've got a two year burn rate on, you've spent them in two years, you lose tax exempt status. We don't have stuff that's ready to go eat that up.
No, on the taxable side.
Taxable side.
You get 45% of the interest from the feds. That's how they, that's how they.
So they buy it down.
Right. But I did some quick analysis. A muni bond at 4% is actually cheaper, assuming a taxable rate of 7.69. There's not a whole lot of interest out there. I, I could be a little bit off on that, but that's all dependent on the spread.
Windfall.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the problem with those taxable buy downs. And they did the same thing, when you know it's built, through these qualified energy conservation bonds, and when you get, everything gets said and done, where's the real value?
Yeah, this is right.
Because they're one offs, and there's, you know, nobody's done it before. So there's a lot of cost of issuance complexity to it. When you, when everything gets said and done, it's kind of the savings.
Traders would not be crazy about tax.
Right. The savings come out in the wash. It just doesn't end up being that great a deal. All right. I'll get you the letter this afternoon.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, I know Maggie wants to come in too.
She is back. I told her to come in in a few minutes. I just have a, I have two things. One of which, as we just spoke a little bit about, this is on the recovery zone facility bonds. I gave you a package last week to look at. And we did get an application for this, for the Forest Dale Village project in the town of Sandwich, Mass. So I would ask, right now, this is the only inquiry and the only application that we've received for the facility zone bonds, I would ask that you vote to make your allocation of, let me show you the number right, $8,554,000 of recovery zone facility bonds to the Forest Dale Village project, Forest Dale Village LLC, in the town of Sandwich, Massachusetts.
I'll move that.
I'll suck it up. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries.
Very good.
That's great. They'll be very happy to know that. And we have no press here today. We're doing all these great things.
No.
Anyway.
No, well, anyways, okay.
The world is seeing that.
The world will know. I did want to share with you the package that I gave, let me make sure it's in color, yeah, to the Cape Cod delegation, just so you see what we talked about. It was very.
Oh, yeah.
Very good meeting, very engaging meeting. I gave them the annual report that you guys got last week. We talked about the following funding requests, and as you know, the state does have some budget issues of their own, probably more substantial than ours this year. But nevertheless, I did ask them for those items, and I'll just go over them for the benefit of people at home. We asked for $130,000 for the Children's Cove, and that would restore the funding that we get from DSS to the full level. Right now, we're getting $65,000 this year. I did ask for the SANE program for Children's Cove as well. That's $80,000. That's a continuation. That's been pretty solid.
I think people, just to remind people what SANE stands for.
SANE is the Sexual Abuse Intervention Network that operates with the Children's Cove. That really pays for the interviewer that we have there, money. I did ask for $90,000 for the shellfish propagation program. You know that we buy quahog and oyster seed with that, distribute it at no charge to us, to the towns. We are using some of our own county money this year. Bill Clark has some money in his budget. We have not gotten any state money this year for that. So that would be a restoration. We used to get $90,000. I asked for $50,000 for the Southeast Massachusetts Agriculture Center. We are getting $50,000 from the state this year for that function, and we hope that that will continue. And I asked for $100,000 for Lyme disease. Right now, we're getting nothing from the state from that. You know we pay for Gabe Simpson. He's our staff entomologist. But this money would really help us do the outreach and the public education, both here on the Cape and on the islands. And right now, we're doing a little bit minimal on the islands, since we don't have any state money for that. And then a statewide program that, there's some very important information, and I think good information attached, is that's on the AmeriCorps program. Darlene wanted me to make sure that I asked the state to continue the $750,000 for the statewide funding for the AmeriCorps program. And one of the things I pointed out to the delegation, I thought was very impressive, if you turn to the last page in that handout, you see the estimated value of service to the Cape Cod Community AmeriCorps program. That's both the AmeriCorps members and for the volunteers that the members get, is almost $7.8 million. And that's over 10 years. And I could tell you that approximately the cost to the county out of its general cost is about $100,000 per year. So total of $1 million. So you see, there's just about eight times leveraging of county money here towards productive local service to the community of Cape Cod. And I thought that was a tremendous number, and I thought, I think the state delegation was impressed by that number too.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, it's terrific.
So who did you actually meet with?
Senator O'Leary was there, Laura from Senator President Murray's office was there. Most, Representative Turner was there, Representative Peak was there. I mean, I'm sure I'm leaving people out. And then, I think most of the staffs, the other members really had some. So it was a good meeting. They were very engaged, they had a lot of questions. I did mention to them, just to follow up, that the charter review process is ongoing, and it's something that emanates from that, that requires legislative action. Two things, it'll both be on the ballot in November, and it'll be submitted for their session beginning in January. We talked about the CMed funding, and there is some progress apparently on that. I think there's be a proposal that'll be congealing is maybe the right word. I know there's a meeting on that on Thursday. And I did mention this Fire Training Academy certification issue that's out there. I've had since more discussions with both Mark Foley and Lee Paris. So I'm not sure we fully understand all of the pieces of that.[1648.02] I'm not sure we fully understand all of the pieces of that, so we need to do a little bit more work on that. Maggie did speak about the Article ninety-seven bill for the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative for the Brewster and Harwich Wind Turbine Projects. Those have been submitted. Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Peak submitted one for Brewster, and Representative Turner submitted one for Harwich. So those bills have been filed.
The other way around.
Might be the other way around. Yeah, did I get backwards? And finally, one of the big issues that I spoke about with my retirement association hat, this is the notion of the funding schedule extension for pension reform. This is a crucial piece, I believe, hopefully will be in the governor's budget. He did mention that there's, there could be a proposal that he will be submitting. Hopefully, it'll be in his budget, or as an outside section of his budget, to basically extend the funding schedule to pay off unfunded liabilities associated with the pension fund. It would be thirty years from the date of enactment, so for some cases, that almost doubles the time to pay off the unfunded liabilities. That's a key piece of basically local aid, of municipal rate relief. I think it would be the single biggest thing they could probably do local, short of giving out a lot more money in local aids, so I think that's.
So that would reduce the town's contribution to the pension system?
It would basically reduce the assessment.
The assessment, yes.
Our assessment went up ten percent for two thousand and eleven. I'm not sure it'd be able to impact two thousand and eleven, but it would certainly impact two thousand and twelve. And can I tell you exactly how much? No, that would have to be calculated by our actuary, and everybody's accurate. But it would be, I believe, a significant impact. And also, if some of the proposals that are adopted are, that we've seen are out there, would create a corridor so that, you know, as we did ten percent, others are probably doing more than that, other retirement associations, creates a corridor of no less than, you know, two percent, no more than eight percent. So it kind of gives towns some surety in how much they're going to pay.
Now, what about the post-retirement? What do they call it, the E?
The OPEP, Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Right. Yeah, is that going anywhere?
I don't know. I know that there's, with some talk in the Pension Reform Committee and with this actuary committee they set up to look at that, whether that will be one of the formal proposals that gets submitted either by the governor or in the future as part of the discussions, I don't know. I hope. Because I think that would be, it's a good time to kind of deal with all of those things at once. If you're looking at the pension piece, maybe smart to look at the OPEP piece as well.
Yes, and if those, if those assessments change, then maybe the post-retirement piece, OPEP?
Exactly. If your pension assessment goes down substantially, you could both save the town money and maybe start funding the OPEP piece a little bit. So maybe the town wouldn't save quite as much money, but they wouldn't have to spend additional funds as well. So that'd be going to do it. So that's that, that's that piece.
That's good.
And actually, good timing, Maggie. That's all I have.
Perfect timing, Maggie. You done?
Before she starts, on scheduling, on scheduling going forward.
Yes.
On March tenth, we would normally meet in the morning. But I'm coming back from DC then. I wouldn't be back in Barnstable on October noon time.
So we could meet in the afternoon on that. I don't think.
Which day, March tenth? Is that an assembly day?
It's not.
No?
We could meet in the afternoon.
Well, there's no reason why we couldn't. The other thing I wanted to mention too are the hearings for the DCPC that are going, the commission sent out their schedule for the, in the different towns.
Bill mentioned those in his report, but I don't think they have the schedule yet, do they?
They had mentioned it at the commission meeting, but I didn't, I didn't write it down.
Well, it was in the newspaper.
Oh.
Yesterday. It was in the Cape Cod Times. I remember. But they start pretty quickly.
Do you want me to go again?
Yeah, that'd be good.
I forgot my, keep coming, the whole.
Did you find the newspaper in my staff? Today's paper or yesterday's?
Yesterday's paper. Yesterday, Monday, right. No, it could have been Monday's paper. I remember, but I know there were four or five different communities, yeah, spread it around the Cape.
The last one I remember was in Provincetown, and there was one, was it one at the assembly? The first one was going to be at the Assembly, you know, Assembly Chamber.
Yeah, because we need to attend those, I think, to get, to hear what the.
We have to hear what people have to say.
The communities are saying about the DCPC.
There you go.
So, so we have the, what am I doing there? Let's see, oh, here it is, right in my hand. The February schedule. So next week, on the third, we meet at one P.M. And then on the tenth, February tenth, we start at ten. This is tentative. And on the seventeenth, we could start at two. So those are tentative starting times.
And that would work for me because the RTA meets in the morning, so that would be perfect for me on the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth, yeah.
And that's an assembly day, so.
And that's a day that maybe Joanne Buntage can come in and talk about the discussion.
Karen was supposed to talk to her because it kind of got complicated a little bit on the third, so.
Yeah.
So that would work for us, yeah.
Are you talking about meeting at two and then going to the assembly afterwards?
Mm-hmm.
We could probably do that. I think that what's after the seventeenth, what is, that'd be the twenty-four. At twenty-four, we've really, between the twenty-fourth of February and whatever the first meeting in March is, we really need to kind of finalize the budget. And those two, hopefully, we'll have all the information. We don't, even if we don't, I guess is what I would say.
March third.
Yeah, we need to kind of wrap it all up.
I think March twenty-fourth, I think we ought to give it a big hit.
You mean February twenty-fourth?
February twenty-fourth. And then if we give it a big hit on the twenty-fourth, we could clean it up on the third. Would you be able to get everything together?
Oh, yeah. But I think that, because it needs to go to the assembly on the seventeenth, and it's usually kind of a two-week production, make sure everything's right. So, yeah, I think, that's what I'm just saying.
Finish the budget on the third.
And the third, we devote the budget. Won't take a lot of time.
And that question that was raised by you this morning about whether or not we could piecemeal sections of the budget, I wouldn't be too comfortable with that because there, I'd rather have the whole budget put together because there may be some areas that we may have to look at. Of course, a lot depends upon, you know, what comes down from the state.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then it could have, I mean, all the way up to the end, it could affect a budget that we thought was okay and send it over, and it's not okay.
That's my concern too.
I wasn't advocating.
No, I know.
My concern is you send over what you have now, which is basically the requested budget.
Yeah.
And then if things don't break hopefully the way we expect, and all of a sudden we have to go back and do substantial cuts, then it's like they have one thing that they're looking at, and all of a sudden they have this completely different thing. It's very confusing, A. Also, it raises issues about, well, why do you do that, you know? It almost creates more trouble than it's.
And they could extend their deadlines on the other end. I mean, they don't have to be done mid-May. Can't they go through the first, the second major?
Under the existing charter, and then they have to finish by like the last day in May. We did talk about that, if you remember, about that, you know, so it may require special meetings, and that can get complicated given their schedules and all that stuff.
Although, when I was in the city, we did have special meetings in other.
Yeah.
They still should be able to.
They should be able to do that, yeah, I think so. Okay.
I don't think there's anything that's that unusual in the budget that they'll need to spend that much time on.
Yeah, I mean, we had a discussion about level funding. Some people have different interpretations of what level funding means. And so we should probably clear that up for them.
Well, on a bottom line basis, because of the sheriff's impact, don't forget, it's a twofold impact. It's now we're in the middle of adjusting the maintenance of effort and how much it actually has to be. But the biggest, single biggest impact is now we do not have that pass-through, which is the sheriff's deeds money that's going to the state now. That was two and a quarter million dollars last year. So that's coming off the top. So on a bottom line basis, budget's going down. We're going basically from twenty-five to around twenty-two, twenty-three million.
Okay, but netting it out, we don't lose that.
No, that piece is washed. The deeds piece for the sheriff's is in and out. But it's a substantial impact if you're just looking at the bottom line.
At the toe, yeah, bottom line.
Seven or eight percent decrease.
Okay, Maggie?
Sure. You had asked, here are copies of the hearings and the locations.
Oh, good.
They start February tenth in First District Courthouse, right here. Following, the next day is February eleventh at the Nathaniel Wixson Middle School in Dennis. Monday, February twenty-second, six P.M. for those to, excuse me, Monday, February twenty-second at four P.M. Eastham Town Hall. Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, six P.M. at the Bourne High School Library. And Thursday, February twenty-fifth, at six P.M. at Provincetown High School Library. There are five proposed hearings.
And when is the holiday in February?
The first Monday is the seventeenth, I think, or sixteenth.
Sixteenth or somewhere. We were just talking about that. So it must be the fourteenth, that early? Fifteenth? Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, must be the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth, right.
So there are no hearings that week, obviously, because somebody was.
Yeah, it's a school vacation week, so it gets complicated.
Yeah, so they didn't include that week. That's good. Okay. So you're on? You want, you need executive session?
No, I don't have any human resource issues. I just wanted to let you know that we just finished, we voted the rates for Cape Cod Community School Health Group today at the board meeting. And it will be a five point four percent increase. And Mark and I will be pulling together, looking at numbers and putting together a proposal to incent employees to move to rate saver plans.
Oh, five point four percent increase. Ah.
Is that across the board, or is that, are there differences?
That's accurate. There are different plans go up, ranging from Master Health Plus with the highest increase of twelve percent.
But you have that, so that I could plug those into my spreadsheet on that next one. So I'll have to refund, revise those numbers.
But don't do it yet because I've asked Michelle, one of the things that we're looking at proposing is in order to incent employees to moving towards rate saver plans and potentially splitting the savings with the employee to cover their, over a period of time, to cover their out-of-pocket expenses, working on setting up health reimbursement accounts.
Well, I can tell you right now how I would propose that we do that in the budget. So right now, I'm carrying ten percent. So it sounds like there will be, even if you plug in all those numbers, there'll be some savings. So I think what I'll do is that even bringing the budget down, we should maybe establish the share, cost-sharing line item because you're talking about potentially paying the employee some of the savings.
Two things. The first is that, yes.
So I can set up the line because you'll need an appropriated amount in order to pay them. So we can do that using some of that savings, and then.
And then you need another one.
Or if they switch, you might have a little bit more savings.
And then you'll need a second line item, Mark, for the health reimbursement accounts. And actually, how we phase that in and when is what we have to, we have to develop.
So employees will be allowed to set up health reimbursement accounts?
There are two things. There's flexible spending accounts, which our employees have already. Those are employee funded.
Right.
They're employee funded.
Totally voluntary.
Totally voluntary, pre-tax. Health reimbursement accounts are employer funded.
Oh, employer funded.
They don't have to be, but you're suggesting.
Typically, they are employer funded because HSAs, health savings accounts are employee funded. So it's not an HSA we're recommending, it's an HR, and it's just a percentage of the copays. And it's not funded, some of the, Wellesley, we'll be going over this, did a perfect example. You don't fund a hundred percent. It's not, it's a hundred, say, a hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. Some people are going to use it, some people will never do it. And as part of that, you require people, in order to use that, they have to draw down their flexible spending accounts, which means they have to have them. So it's very, very complicated, but it will bring some savings.
Do you think, do you think at the federal level that they may either eliminate or maybe reduce the pre-tax privilege now that people have on their insurance premiums?
I didn't hear that.
You didn't hear that? Well, there was a proposal through the health reform bill, if you remember, that would, if that did not exist, what, in other words, it's like, it's like, really, it increases people's wages. Did you ever see that piece on there?
Decrease them, basically.
No, by having it, it increases your wages. Because you're using the money for yourself.
You get more, right, you get more take home.
That's right. You get more take home pay. So, but the idea is that that money, that the federal government doesn't get because of that pre-tax benefit, would actually fund health insurance for, I don't know how many millions of people. But anyway, it's something that was.
Wasn't that just on the, this was the Cadillac plan?
Yeah, well.
So depending on what the cattle, what's the money's a Cadillac, no?
No, this was a totally separate discussion. And there was a big article about it, I don't know if it was in the New York Times or where I read it, I read it someplace, that if that were done, it would be a huge.
Burden, yeah.
Well, yeah, a huge impact in terms of funding the health reform. But anyway, so there's been, well, I guess there's been nothing said about that for this coming year.
The question that I have for you is that we moved, you know, the memory health plan here on the county. And when we were asked to move from master medical to PPO, we did that.
Master Health Plus, actually.
Okay.
Master Health Plus.
Okay. What effect does that have on me or somebody like me, as far as what you're proposing?
Well, it was a substantial cost savings, both for you and for the county.
No, no, I'm talking about, and what's being proposed?
We'll have some, this is not a, this is a private discussion. This is, I'm going to talk about specific health plans. But we will have examples of each of that that we're working on now. But I don't want to get into anyone's specific.
It's two news, because it just had the meeting today.
But I think that, you know, what people would be concerned about that works for us is to have a specific example of what it would mean, what it would cost, and what would be the change, if any, in the, you know.
Where we're heading to are rewarding those units who offer nothing but rate saver plans. We are, that's where we're heading to. We can't afford ten percent increases in our health insurance, or even five percent increases in our health insurance, which is very good. So in the next, you know, the question, where do you think we're going in five or ten years? I mean, putting national healthcare aside, even for our unit, you're looking at higher copays for our employees. To keep the same quality of benefits, we're going, employees are going to have to pay more. Otherwise, you will end up in GIC, state mandated regulated plans, that don't give you a lot of potential choices or options that we have as a joint purchase group.
And much higher copays.
Much higher copays, and deductible. So what, but that's, you know, we may say all new employees have nothing, no option but rate saver plans. But that's where we're heading. Anyone who thinks that we're going to be able to maintain, you know, we don't have Master Health Plus, but those that think that they can keep those plans, they'll pay for them. They'll be significantly higher. You know, there's been some conversation as to whether we say, you know, I'm sorry, we're not going to include those in our plan. If you want them, go do your own thing.
Well, if the governor approves plan design, then you could actually do that.
So we'll see. But that's where we're heading. We're heading towards higher copays. That's where most people who have health insurance that are not in the public sector already are.
Well, I recognize that, but I think that as we go forward, I think that, you know, that there's a great amount of anxiety that ties to any change, and this is a significant change. The, I appreciate the fact that, you know, that if you want to keep a particular level of benefits, you know, you would, you would have to pay for them. There are, you know, there are issues in terms of, let's say, affordability, you know, of different healthcare plans. This is not, this is not easy stuff. And one of the things that I would hope that you'd look, that you'd be looking at is that we have offered family plans, and other, you know, other providers offer, you know, individual coverage and reduce the impact of family plans so that where family plans are designed to support families with children, that some plans are offered that support just the husband or the wife. And I think that, you know, that many people that work for us have seen their children grow up, and perhaps a family plan that might reduce that cost, and I don't know if it will reduce our cost.
We looked at that, and we, that's from a policy, and actually argue against the logic of what you're saying about giving benefits to those that have children or usually at your lower end of your salary scale, need the higher of the subsidy. Those who are in their latter years that don't have children in a family plan can afford, they're in different positions in their lives, to pay more. Shifting all of that cost back down to our newer, younger workers is like a double burden. So we don't do that as a policy. We let that reach them out.
I think these are all things that, you know.
I know we discussed them at Great Lakes.
And, you know, you might discuss them internally, but I think that this is the kind of information that's useful for the people who, you know, we're trying to help and trying to support with these very important benefits should know.
But that's done with the employees, yeah. Okay, anything else? No? Do we have anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, I don't have anything else, so.
We'll do your.
Okay.